Wear on, on your head.
Yes.
Right, you know, this uh.
I don't have.
Uh, six dollars.
I don't have one of those. Okay, so now we're at number ten, one twenty-one Durant Avenue. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing detached dwelling by constructing a side addition, a front addition, a full second story addition, a rear basement walkout and a rear deck. And with this application, we have materials submitted by the applicant, two form letters in support and opposition from property, A property on Langken Avenue Boulevard and one twenty-three Durant and one fifteen Durant. Mister Mastandrea, we're back to you.
Yes, hello, good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon. So, um. Alright, so we, we need your name and address and we need your presentation, because there is some opposition.
Yes. My name is Leo Mastandrea, I live at eight one seven Cosburn Ave. And I'm the agent for the owners at one twenty-one Durant. And we are here today to do a, in addition to the existing bungalow. And we have four variances in front of us. Um, I'd like to start off by mentioning that I took a look at the drawings and I think we could remove variance number five, which has to do with the rear deck. Um, I could make that comply, so I, I'm no longer requesting variance number five.
Okay.
Um, now, in speaking to.
Can I get clarification? You, you mentioned you have four variances, I have seven here.
I have five.
I have five. I have five.
Doesn't it then go over to six and seven on the next page?
I have five too.
No, I, we only have five variances.
I only have one page, Carl.
Oh, great, okay, I've got a mistake on mine, okay. Thank you for correcting that.
So, um, by removing variance number five, I think it will help our application. So now, I'm speaking to variance number one. So what we did is, we did a, a, a research in the decisions of the committee, um, prior decisions for, within five hundred meters of the subject property. And I believe that our coverage is consistent with what's been approved here at the committee. If you can turn on my page number one, um, coverage on, uh, at one nineteen Durant is at forty-seven point two percent, where we're only asking for forty-two, and that is directly beside us. If you look at page number four, they're asked, they got approved at forty-five percent at thirty-nine Langken. Page number twelve, at, um, one one six Roosevelt, they were also approved at forty-five percent coverage. Page number fourteen, ninety-eight Roosevelt was also approved at forty-six percent coverage. And page number sixteen, at five oh four Cosburn, was approved at forty-one point eight percent. So these are very consistent. And also page nineteen, if we look at page nineteen, that's one E Treadwood Boulevard, was approved at, um, forty-seven percent coverage. Um, now, moving on to the height variance, number two. If we look at again, page number one, which is directly beside us, they were approved at eight point eight five, where we're asking for, um, eight point five. And if we go to number three, page number three, they were approved at eight point four at ninety Durant. If we go to page number eight of my submission, they were also approved at eight point six two. And page number eleven, at, uh, page number eleven was at five four five four O'Connor, they were approved at eight point eight one, where we're only asking for eight point five. Now, in speaking to, um, the floor area contents, which we're asking for, for point eight one five, if we look at page number two, again, is our, our, our neighbor, um, directly beside us, they were approved at one point one eight percent, which we're only asking for, um, point eight one. If we go to page number three, uh, is it page number three? Page number, no, not page number three, but page number six. Page number six was approved at one point zero one six. Page number ten is, um, on O'Connor was approved at point nine three. Page number fourteen was approved at point eight four. Page number sixteen was approved at, um, eighty-two point five. Page number seventeen was approved at one point zero one six. Page number nineteen was approved at point nine one. And page number twenty-one was approved at point eight eight. So that covers those first three variances. And as far as variance number four is concerned, that's an existing condition on our, on our ground floor. If you look at the existing survey, which was also in our submission, you could see that, um, our setback is point three, which is what we're proposing. But just to add to that, behind the garage, we are increasing our setback to one point. Yeah, one point two nine, actually. So behind the garage, we're setting it back to one point two nine, where the bylaw requires point nine. So, in my opinion, I believe this is consistent with what's been, um, approved here at the committee, and I believe it does meet the four tests. If you have any questions, um, I can answer them for you. Um, in addition though, we also got support, we submitted two support letters, and we also got verbal support from one nineteen Durant, one seventeen Durant. And the funny thing is, is we also got verbal from one fifteen Durant, who wrote also a letter of opposition. Um, and one oh seven Durant, we had verbal, and thirty Langken, which is directly behind us, we also got verbal, um, consent, so.
Okay, Mister Mastandrea, your, your time is up. Uh, you're done.
Okay, just in, in, in closing, just quickly, planning has no concerns, development engineering has no concerns, and forestry has no concerns, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. Alright, Carol Mosley.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Carol Mosley, I reside at forty-six Oregon Crescent. I'm here on behalf of my mother, who resides at one twenty-three Durant. Um, so as I said, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I wanted to point out two things before I started. The site plans that have been submitted continue to show one twenty-three Durant Avenue as a two-story brick house. It is a single-story bungalow. And as the committee member pointed out at the beginning of today's meeting, an application to renovate one twenty-one Durant Avenue was rejected in twenty nineteen. The application was denied because, as the committee members themselves said, I quote, grossly oversized for this lot. Um, the plans that have been revised for this application do not differ greatly from the twenty nineteen plans. And the north side setback is actually, as he pointed out, at zero point three meters. And although I could address each, um, variance, as the gentleman who spoke before me did, I want to just highlight a few major points right now. As our letter of opposition clearly states, our primary concern is the loss of light and the space between the two houses. And it is true that the setback could be at zero point three right now, but at a, a level of a garage, which is only a height of possibly seven to eight feet, and not an eight point five meter wall that will be beside the entire house. The other point is, the letters of verbal and verbal, the letters of support. Letter of support was received from the owner of one twenty-seven Durant Avenue. The signed statements do not point out that at one twenty-seven Durant Avenue is a new two-story construction, which built its, the addition over only the main body of the house, and maintained a single store, the single garage store space between it and its neighboring bungalow at one twenty-nine. The original plans that one twenty-seven had submitted caused to build over the garage, and those variances have been denied. And we are requesting that the owners at one twenty-one not build over the garage at one twenty-one. We want to protect that space, the light entering the kitchen. A photo of one twenty-seven Durant is actually included in our submission. I think if you go down a little bit, um, it is not that one. Anyways, I'm gonna keep reading, um, of the verbal consents obtained, there's one twenty-seven Durant, you're, so it has a two-story addition and a single level bu, uh, garage attached. I don't know what the proper terminology is for that. It maintains that airspace that was already there between the bungalow to the left in that photo and the house that currently is built up. Of the verbal consents obtained, one nineteen and one seventeen are both two-story constructions. And one fifteen, as he indicated, did say verbal support, but has in fact submitted a strong letter of opposition. We've also spoken to neighbors and have verbal support from one eleven, thirty Durant, thirty-three Langken, twenty-two Fair Side, sixty Durant, and thirty-eight Judith Drive, I can provide these addresses later. The owners at thirty-eight Judith Drive actually have recently built a two-story addition, and they maintain four point, four feet eight inches between houses. And the owner was adamant that the slight setback not be reduced. The agent for one twenty-one has included the documentation. On paper, these variances seem similar to what is being requested today for one twenty-one Durant, as they involve the height, the setback, or the floor space index of the approved renovations. What the numbers fail to demonstrate is the unique impact the requested variance will have on the property and the people who reside at one twenty-three Durant Avenue. Please refer to the photograph that the applicant submitted of page twenty-eight of his, um, supporting documentation. You will see that there is a photograph of one nineteen Durant Avenue. That's, uh, page twenty-eight, sorry. That's the photograph. One nineteen is adjacent to one twenty-three, and you won't, to one twenty-one, I apologize. This photo clearly indicates how much the addition at one nineteen at Durant Avenue has affected the light entering the kitchen and south-facing windows and doors of one twenty-one Durant Avenue. Notice how the, how dark the laneway is between these houses. One twenty-three would have a fate similar to this if the proposed construction is allowed. The narrow passage weight not only affects the light entering the house, it also impedes property maintenance, and it needs to be maintained on one twenty-three to, as a fire escape. We could not clean our eaves tops if this was to happen to us as well.
Miss, Miss Mosley, your time is up, could you wrap up, please?
Sure. Our major points today is that the, there are a lot of constructions that have gone up in the neighborhood, a hundred and six houses. Out of those, only one, that house that you're looking at right now, has been impacted in the way that our property will be impacted if the house at one twenty-one were to go up in the way it's built. An eighth and a half meter wall, three feet from our kitchen window and from the, the south side of the house. We ask that we be able to maintain the light that we have, and that we've asked the owners to consider building only over the main body of the house and not above the garage.
Is, is the garage attached?
The garage is attached. There, when I have included in my submission other examples of attached garages that did not build over the garage, but just built over the body of the main house.
Thank you. Panel, do you have any questions of this witness? Let's go, let's go back to Mister Mastandrea.
Yes, hello?
Yes.
Um, I am sympathetic to the neighbor's concerns, but, um, if we look at the zoning definition by law, um, number ten, five forty-seven one, setback exemptions, basically says that we can build on top of our existing structure. Um, it says additions to side and, um, rear lawfully existing dwellings. Despite of regulation, um, ten, five forty-seven one, the requirement, minimum setback of a lot, or extension of a lot, full building referred to on a lot, um, is, A, um, less than nine meters, the minimum side yard can be maintained, and then, B, um, the minimum side yard setback permitted. So essentially, if we didn't have that little piece in the front that we're adding, we would not have a side yard setback issue with this application. And we are building on top of the existing garage. Um, and again, I was mentioning that behind the garage, we are setting it back to comply. So the access that she's speaking about will be the same as it is now, because we are not moving the building any closer, and the access they have currently will be the same access that she'll have in the future. And, and then she did also talk about the application that was denied. One of the main reasons it was denied, I believe, is that one of the var, there was more variances, first of all, and we were asking for point eight nine, um, floor area, floor space index, where we reduced that to point eight one five. So I do believe that, um, we've made some substantial adjustments, which planning department had no concerns in our, with our application.
Okay. Uh, panel, any questions? Carl?
Um, Mister Chairman, I, I remember when this application was before us previously. I was on this panel, the panel that, um, refused the application. And the, um, the neighbor is quite right. I, I, the objection was that the building was just too large, too bulky for, for the property. Um, I, and yes, there were more variances. I've got, the reason I had the wrong number of variances when we began is I was looking at the wrong, the wrong decision. But the decision, previous decision had, um, seven variances, but the two that are not included here were very minor. They were, um, one is a technical variance, actually, and, and one was roof eaves. I, I don't, if, if you made dramatic changes to this proposal, I don't see them. It looks to me to be very much the same building that was before us previously. Um, and, and without going through the variances and the numbers, what specifically is different about the massing? Uh, it, it looks exactly the same.
Our floors. In the old application, our floor space index was point eight nine.
Yeah, but what is, what is, what is the ramifications on the actual look of the building? But that's not my point, my point is not the numbers. I appreciate that you've made some minor shaving off of numbers, but when you look at the building plans and the building elevations, they look remarkably the same. It looks as though, I mean, I was shocked when I saw this on the agenda, because I thought it was the same application.
Well, it, it's not the same application. We did, yes, we kept the same look, because that's the look my client wants, and his family's gonna move into this house, and it, and I, I, I feel that he could have the same look, because if you look at page number twenty-eight, as the neighbor mentioned, that, that house is very similar to what we're asking for.
Which house is that?
Number, our, our neighbor, our direct neighbor at one nineteen.
I'm, I'm aware of that, that was, that was as well during the last discussion. Uh, that was an area of concern as well. I'm, I'm just, I just wanted to make sure that I'm not missing something. I don't see much of a change, and if there's some dramatic change that I have missed, I just wanted you to clarify it for me, but I, I frankly, I don't see it.
Okay, any further questions, panel? Okay, we'll go into committee.
Okay, sorry, I have one question.
Okay, you.
I, I just want to, I just want to, uh, repeat Carl's question is that if there's a change or reduction of the FSI, from previous FSI, how, how has it been achieved? In, 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 it, it, it can't say that it, it, it looks like it's the same elevation, same plans, and, yeah.
From, from the front, it is the same, but from the rear was reduced.
Okay, thank you, yeah. So you, you, you sort of chopped a bit off from the back?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we're in committee, any comments? Yes, Nimrod.
Yeah, I, I would agree with Carl's comments earlier. Uh, I just feel that this is an overdevelopment of this property. I think it, it appears as a three-story building, very minimal side yard, and I think the implication is just to look at the building, the existing building to the right of, uh, to see what will happen. And, um, so I, I'm really concerned that this is just too big, too, too, too much massing on this site.
Carl?
I agree with Nimrod. In addition though, I think the, um, the lady that was speaking for her mother that owns one twenty-three Durant, I think she's raised a very valid concern. Um, the property of one twenty-three Durant is a standard East York bungalow. They're all basically the same floor plan, and they rely on a side window. It's the only light that comes in to the kitchen. Um, in all the other examples that she gave, um, where there was a larger building going up next door, the larger building occurred on the other side of the property, which is, um, occupied by a one-story garage that's attached to the bungalow. In this particular, and, and so the, the kitchen window has actually some breathing room. In her particular case, and she's the existing condition, she's going to be facing, I think it's an eight point, uh, five nine meter high brick wall. Um, I think that is a real hardship. Um, it, uh, it reduces any view that she might have, but more importantly, it reduces the light into her building. And I think she's raised an extremely valid concern. I think this project creates a liability for her.
Carl, just, just to clarify, variance number two is now eight point five rather than eight point five nine.
I'm sorry, I have to stop, I'm trying to look at both variances together, my, my apologies, thank you.
It doesn't make much of a difference, and you're right, that's, that's the, that's the variance that bothers me the most, is it? And that's the one.
Yeah, me too.
Everything else is, is relatively minor, this one isn't. Any other comments, or do we have a motion?
But you, uh, I'm so, sorry, but if, if, if variance number two, they, they, you deleted, you, they can still build up to seven point two, will their block the light up?
Pardon?
Yes. Okay, uh, you've mentioned variance number two, uh, they're allowed to build up to seven point two. I'm just saying that if they build up to that height, will, will the light still be blocked? Will this still affect the, the, the same way?
I, I, I don't know.
You don't know, right?
I, I, I believe it, I believe it would be. I, I think the issue here is that the, we're faced here with some variance requests, and some of them are, are not that serious. But I think when you look at the manner in which the variance requests are going to be implemented, um, you're going to end up with the light being seriously blocked by, into an adjacent owner. If, if you don't get that vary, if the variance isn't approved, there is no, uh, there's no decision about how you deal with the di, design of the building. Um, and in fact, you could do as the, as the person objecting recommended, which is to set a greater distance back, um, from that sideline. I, I just, this property is all about context. And this building is probably quite, quite acceptable, but I don't believe it is on this lot.
That, that, yeah, exactly, that's what I'm trying to point at. Uh, my problem is not variance number two, it's actually the FSI, the jump, uh, the increase. If, if they allow to have that, they can, they, they can build on top, right? If they're not allowed that, maybe they will allow, uh, that, they will have to be forced to cut back the second floor some, uh, some. And, and my, 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 my problem is number three, rather than two.
Okay, do we have a motion? And Nimrod, did you have a comment?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna move a motion to refuse the variances. I think it's an overall overdevelopment of the property, and that the variances are not minor and, uh, not appropriate. So my motion is refused.
Okay, do we have a second there? Carl, all in favor of the motion? Your application is refused, sir. Thank you. Number eleven, eleven twenty-nine, Dufferin Street. Purpose of this application is to convert the existing two-story, one-unit detached dwelling into a three-story, four-unit detached dwelling by constructing a rear three-story addition and full second story, and, and full second and third story additions. Uh, with this application, we have materials submitted by the applicant, uh, correspondence and concern or interest from eleven twenty-seven Dufferin, and opposition from eleven twenty-three and eleven twenty-one at Dufferin Street. Mister Nagash?
Yes, good afternoon, my name is Babak Nakos.
We can't hear you.
Yes.
Hi, uh, Babak Nagash, if you can come closer to your microphone? We're just having trouble hearing you.
Yes, can we be better now?
No, we can't hear you.
Uh, did you also call in?
I, I, I had a problem with Lebex, so I tried to come in with the phone. Uh, one area. Is it better now?
Yes.
Can, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, my name is Babak Nakos, uh, good afternoon to all the members and the chairman. I'm representing the owner for this property. So we are looking for five variances, and I'm aware of the objection of the neighbor, and I met the neighbors, uh, two of those, and we do communicate, communicate with them. And I do understand the concern for the depth of the develop, the depth of the building we're posing. So I just, do you have a minute to, uh, explain that?
Alright, so Mister Nagash, before you continue, would you please, just for the record, give us your full name and your address.
Yes, my name is Babak Nakos, uh, from company BN GM Design, eighty-three Galaxy Boulevard, unit thirteen, Etobicoke, Ontario.
Thank you. Okay, please tell us about this application.
Yes, we are looking for five variances, uh, for this application. The first variance is for the front landscaping, uh, percentage. Uh, the second would be the, the depth of the building, uh, seventeen point zero nine meter and you are fourteen meter. The third one would be the side yard setbacks, uh, one point forty-five. Uh, we have point two, four, point fifty-five, versus point six. Uh, the fifth one would be departing the spaces, because we are having the four clicks for this property, uh, there's no access to the property for park. So I, I'm aware of the objection of the neighbor, the right neighbor on eleven twenty-seven Dufferin Street, and I met the owner, and we went to his concern, uh, so basic concern of the depth of the most, uh, of the, the privacy, and the depth of, uh, this building. Uh, and I had tried to explain it to him and to the, to the committee. Uh, the existing building is very close to the Dufferin Street and property line. So we tried to meet the, the bylaw requirements, so we moved the building back to three meter setback. And we have the, we have to design the building with seventeen meter. So the mid, the building is, uh, project out from the back of my, uh, H S, uh, eleven twenty-seven by point eighty-six meter, which is left on three feet. So, uh, on that side of the building, we do have no windows for the privacy. So I did, I did, uh, I, we have a balcony for the exit as well. So I propose a privacy wall on that side, a bolted actually, to keep the privacy. a bolted actually, to keep the privacy of all the neighbors intact. So given that, the neighbor is, the neighbor is set up with his own building, including the front siding addition. And the newer addition here is done at the back. It's about eighteen-point-zero-five meter plus one-point-eight meter to the front setback, which we do have three-meter setback, is nineteen-point-twenty-two. So the difference of the projection of our building is because of that. If any other concern, I can go through all the variances with the committee.
All right. So panel, do you have any questions? Okay, let's take it into-
Yeah, my question was, have you discussed the concern about privacy, which is the rear staircase and balconies at the back that goes from the ground up to the third story?
Yes, we, we do provide the privacy wall at each side of the building. So no, no overlooking to the neighbor privacy at all. So I assure the neighbor that I'm gonna provide this privacy on the drawings.
I'm sorry, what's the privacy wall? I don't understand it.
So the privacy wall would be the full wall. So we're enclosing the each side of the fire exit on the north side and the balcony on the south side. So you don't see the neighbor's side.
So you're gonna enclose the stairway, the stairw, the stairwells? And just leave it open on one side?
Yeah, we, yeah, it would be open on one side. We do need it for fire exit. And we do require a stair to go out. So that stair, it won't be used for the, for the everyday use. It's just a fire exit for the building. So the main point of entry is the front of the building and the stair, a stair inside the building. And this stair is just to maintain the fire exit in case of the fire or any incident.
Okay. All right, any further questions, or we take it into committee?
Mr. Chairman, I had one further question.
Yeah?
If, can, can we get the site plan on the, on the, on the screen? It's picking up on what Nimrod was suggesting. It's not just a stairway at the back of this property. You see that L-shaped hatched area? It's got diagonal lines on it? That, that actual patio space, if you will, as I read, occurs on every floor. Now, the, the floor plans that we've been provided don't include that. The floor plan just ends at the back wall. But to the point that Nimrod was raising, that I would argue, notwithstanding the fact it's also a fire escape, that's a massive deck on every level of the building. And I think that there are, there are serious privacy issues there. And I, I just wanted to clarify that the applicant is saying that there will be a privacy barrier, I'd like him to define what that is, along the north limit and along the south limit of that L-shaped platform. Is that correct?
Yes, it is correct. So this deck, on the south side, toward eleven-twenty-seven Dufferin Street, it's just forty-two inches to allow for the exit. On the right side, it's the largest because it was a fire exit. And we are gonna do a full, full wall there at each side to ensure the privacy of the neighborhood maintained. And we have more-
So, so in fact, the, the visual impression of the building from the, let me see, from the north, is that whole L-shaped extension is, is like, looks like an extension of the building? Because there's a wall there on the north side. You don't have a drawing that shows that.
At the moment, no, we don't have it. This is issued raised by the neighbor recently. We just, we met them. We are using the glass, glass and the glasses, like acid, it's a sandblasted privacy glass for that. So we're not trying to utilize the brick or siding or stucco privacy that area. So we want to keep it separate entity. So if we don't, we haven't gone through the complete building review. If the, if we don't need the exit of the stair, the balcony would satisfy the building department and meet the OBC code. So we eliminate the stair going down. So we're gonna reduce the balcony later on on that condition to just forty-two-inch balcony for the fire exit, so the fireman can access the ladder in case of any events. The whole reason we have the stair is just in case we need it.
No, I appreciate why you need the stair for fire access. Then if you look at the north elevation, the, the, that whole left side has got, is basically a wall.
Correct, correct. We are correct. We have a glass wall there, correct. We are providing glass, fully glass wall on the, on the north side, correct. So, so you don't see through.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Take it into committee. Any comments, or do we have a motion? Peter?
I'm glad to hear that the applicant reached out to the neighbor and, and glad to hear that the solution they've come up with is opaque screening. Because I think if it were a wall, as was being discussed, that would have been an additional kind of oppressive element for the, the back. So I think this is a large development, but I think the fact that it's providing four new units close to transit makes it defensible. I think if it were a single-family house, I think it would be, I'd be less supportive of it. But as it stands now, if no one has any other comments, I'd be happy to move a motion for approval.
Okay.
I just have a question in our comment. Like, what, what are we gonna do? And if there is a condition about the stairs, porches at the back, how do we ensure that there is, we address this privacy concern?
I would, I would add a condition that opaque screening of a minimum of one-point-five meters be provided on the north and south side of each, each of the above-ground levels.
Okay. Do we have a second here for that motion? Jim?
Yes, I was appointed, yeah.
Okay. All in favor? Have your approval, sir. Thank you. Number twelve, four-eighteen McRoberts Avenue. Purpose of this application is to construct a new, new two-story laneway suite in the rear yard. With this application, we have materials submitted by the applicant and a report from engineering. Mr. Bhagdabi?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. This is Bhagdabi from BBA Design Studio. I'm the applicant and architect for this project.
Can we have your address, sir?
It's eighteen Somerset Way, Unit two-one-three in North York, M two N six X five.
Thank you. Could we have your comments, brief comments on this application?
Sure. What we're proposing is basically building a laneway suite in the back of the existing house. Being a corner property, you usually get the variance for the, one of the flanked setbacks because we cannot comply with a one-and-a-half-meter north-side yard setback. We do comply with the height and most of the criteria of zoning. The planning have no concerns. And I can briefly explain the four variances. I already explained them in, on my report. But I'm just briefly explaining that the variance number one deals with the rear yard landscaping between the house and the laneway, which the main reason is the existing concrete deck and the stairs that is taking away almost thirty-five-and-a-half percent of our rear yard. And that may bring us down to the numbers before you. The second and fourth variance dealing with the north-side yard setback, which we already have a permit to construct a garage with the five-centimeter north-side yard setback. We have received comments from the engineering department regarding the water and how we're going to contain it within the property. So we revised the drawings and got the revised zoning notice sent to you. And we, now that five-centimeter approved by the committee and the building permit that we have, now it's increased to twelve-point-seven centimeter on the north side, which is the flanked side. The rest of the comments from the engineering department regarding the water will be dealt with with the permit application by hiring a professional engineer and preparing grading plans satisfactory to the building department. And the last variance we have is in regards to a roof over the deck on the second floor of the rear of our laneway suite. Considering the fact that this is a corner property, we have three walls visible from two lanes. So in order to break down the facade of the rear of our laneway suite, we are having a small canopy covering the deck so we can have some architectural feature, like pot lights, to make it interesting from the north view of, from the north view towards our laneway suite. The planning, again, have no objections. And I'm really glad to answer any question if the committee panel has.
Yeah, okay. Take it into committee now?
I have a question.
Yes, Nimrod?
I do have a question. My question is, the, the new house that has been built, what is its setback from that lane?
The existing house on the property is point-zero-oh-five, which is constructed. It's a foot setback from the north side. And the building permit we have for the garage to be built on this property, its north-side yard setback is five centimeter.
I guess because on the plan, the house looks like it has a greater setback.
Oh, it's, if, if we can zoom in to the northwest corner of the house? Yeah, at the, at the left-hand side corner, right below the number seven-point-five-meter distance, you can see it's zero-point-three-oh-five, a north-side yard setback shown.
Okay, so it's point-three, uh, meters?
Oh-five. Yes, it's a point.
And so why can't you provide that for the laneway suite? I, I don't understand why you're, you're literally providing almost no setback.
The reason is that we already have an approval to build or construct the garage and approved by the committee back in two thousand seventeen. And a building permit is issued for the same five-centimeter north-side yard setback. And we're following the same committee decision.
But now, now it is what, a two, two-story laneway suite?
Correct. It's a garage on the ground floor and laneway on top.
Right. So are there any issues with, you know, sidelines for people using the laneway and driving and trying to get, get by?
We have our west side yard setback in compliance. So we have a turnabout. And there is no wall or architectural feature blocking the view of the driver, drivers on the west side.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we're in committee now. Any, any comments, or do we have a motion? Carl?
Mr. Chairman, I was initially concerned that with a bylaw as new as the laneway suite bylaw, that variances to it, I think we have to be very careful. And I was, I guess, a little more negatively predisposed to this. However, I do think that the applicant's covering letter and his explanation today, in my view, has justified the variances he's requesting. I think they're reasonable. I think the solution is, 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 yeah, produces a very good laneway suite that exhibits all the positive principles laneway suites were created to, to, to bring to the community. So I have no difficulty at all in supporting this application subject to the standard development engineering conditions that are, that are already in the development engineering report.
Okay, before we go on-
Yeah, I was second there because also I would agree with our analysis. They have a very good cover letter explaining. I had a question about variance number four in the beginning. And then when I looked at their presentation, they explained very well. And then I think it's a very logical solution. And also when I look at the laneway bylaw, the mass and everything is so close. And then I do think that the architectural canopy that penetrating forty-five-degree angle, it is actually a positive thing when you look at the, to the public. It is nicer. It actually enhances the aesthetic. I'm in support of the application.
Okay, so I, I just wanted to ask the panel if they know why variance number four, which says that the building shall be no closer than two-point-five meters from the center line of a lane. And this is one-point-eight-eight. And we don't have anything from transportation or whoever talks about it because invariably we get that. So I, I was surprised we didn't see that.
I'm assuming it's because there is a building. I may be wrong, but I'm assuming it's because the city's already issued a building permit for the garage, which is situated in that location. So yes, it's, it's not a standard ask from development engineering. But I, my assumption was it was because of the existing permit. The applicant may be able to clarify.
But also I understanding that because it is framing at the corner, and then if they ask both of the same setback, it's probably reduced, it's making the garage not work anyway. And it will probably make the laneway house not viable to build if you're asking from whole side. They already have the standard setback from the, from the west side. And I think maybe they, they allow them to build a garage to the north closer to the lot line.
I shouldn't be raising impediments to our decision. All right, let us vote. All in favor? Have your approval, sir? Oh, so Nimrod, are you opposed? You're opposed?
Sorry, I, I am opposed.
Okay. So nevertheless, you have your approval, sir. Thank you. Number thirteen, three-twenty-five Carlton Street. Purpose of this application is to convert the existing two-story, one-unit townhouse into a two-story, two-unit townhouse by constructing a front basement walkout. With this application, we have materials from the applicant. We have correspondence from heritage preservation and transportation and support from three-twenty-seven Carlton Street. Ms. Kuhn, please.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. So it's Monica Kuhn. I'm the architect and agent for the owner. Do you need my address?
Yes, we do.
Twelve Sackville Place.
Good.
Toronto.
All right, perhaps you could tell us briefly about this?
Yes. We would like to, basically it's to put in a front walkout stair from the basement. Because it's a row house, it would be very difficult to come in from the back. And it would be more desirable to come in from the front for a separate unit. We're allowed to put in a separate unit. That's not the issue. It's specifically about this stairway. So you can see on the site plan that two-thirds of the front yard is actually on city property. And then we have a very narrow front yard. So our stair just fits in between the property line and the front bay of the house. And what we've also done is pulled that stair away from that front wall to allow us to enlarge the basement window in that bay to be able to get more light into that unit. So the three variances have to do with front yard landscaping and soft landscaping. Currently, we have a front porch- Currently, we have a front porch steps and a walkway. Then there's a small window well and there's also a, a walkway in the front already. So we're not really reducing it so much. But because we're digging out for this basement walkout, we're not left with much soft landscaping. But again, two-thirds of the, of the front yard that people assume is the front yard from the sidewalk is still maintaining because it is city property.
But it's soft landscape, the city property?
Yeah, yes, as, except for the walkway from the sidewalk to the front door.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any panel members have a question?
And we have worked closely with Heritage. They are in approval as long as we provide some landscaping in front of the stairwell and the railing. And no issue there.
All right. Panel, any questions? All right, we'll take it into committee. Any comments or do we have a motion?
I, I, I will start with a comment. I read through the presentation material and then I think that it is the, the architect or the agent have made a way, a lot of effort to actually keeping the front almost identical. And I think there's very little impact of this in terms of the consistence of that architecture on that street. And I, I think that adding another unit with some more, some more light coming, going down is a good addition. And I'm in support of it. I'm waiting for other people's comment. Otherwise, I'll move for approval.
Make, make a motion.
My motion is move for approval with the condition of urban forestry number two. And I think they still require heritage permit, but this is, we, we don't need to put that as a condition.
Would you be open to adding the heritage as a condition though? Because it's very specific about the railing and the planting.
Oh, yeah.
I don't see a difficulty in adding that. And the applicant clearly agrees with that.
Yes, that's fine, because I thought that they have to comply with that anyway. It's a designated building, but, but you're right. I, I don't, I'm okay with that, putting it as a condition.
Okay. Do we have a seconder? Carl, you second it? All in favor? All in favor? You have your approval. Thank you. Number fourteen, one-seventy-one East Liberty Street. Purpose of this application is to convert residential parking spaces to non-residential parking spaces within the existing mixed-use building. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant. Sumit Aluwalia.
Yes, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. So my name is Sumit Aluwalia. I'm representing Liberty Market Tower, Inc., Care of Lifetime Developments. We're the owners of one-seventy-one East Liberty. If everyone's okay, I can jump right into a summary.
Yeah, tell, tell us. I, I'm familiar with this spot and I have trouble parking there.
Sure.
Because there doesn't seem to be, doesn't seem to be a lot of parking places. So this must be underground?
Correct. So one-seventy-one East Liberty Street. It's a mixed-use building comprised of two-hundred-and-seventy-nine residential units along with retail and office space on the podium levels. The structure of the building is nearing completion and we have our first occupancy scheduled for October of this year. This project is part of the larger Liberty Market Building Commercial Complex that features bars, restaurants, entertainment uses, and about three-hundred-thousand square feet of offices. So the matter before us today is related to the conversion of fifty residential parking spaces in the new tower to commercial spaces within our shared garage. Right now, the building is about ninety-seven percent sold out and there remains a considerable amount of unsold and vacant residential spaces. Given the abundance of spaces that have already been built, we're proposing that a large portion of the remaining spaces would be better utilized for office, retail, and general public usage rather than sitting empty within the condo component. That being said, we'd still retain a percentage of the remaining spaces for future resident flexibility. Practically, this would simply involve shifting the internal parking gate as all the vehicles enter through the shared garage ramp into the overall garage. That being said, the underutilization of residential parking, it's not surprising in this area given the proximity to the exhibition go station, TCC cycling facilities, and we're projecting the continued decrease in residential demand as we get closer to the proposed Ontario line in close proximity. We see this minor variance as meeting the general intent and purpose of the OP in that there's no land use changes proposed on the site. We maintain the general intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw in that our two thousand and fifteen bylaw called for, I believe, four-hundred-and-sixty-two spaces to be built, or sorry, to be provided while we are currently overproviding in terms of the aggregate number. On the residential side, we're requesting a reduction to better serve public demand and avoid underutilized private spaces. We see this minor variance as being desirable and appropriate for the development in that it provides added spaces for visitors to the neighborhood who work or frequent the businesses here. And timely, given that there is recent development applications in with the city, that will be eliminating some of the parking lots in the neighborhood. And finally, we see it just being minor in nature in that the spaces are built, they're not being utilized, and we're proposing shifting them to more public-facing usage. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, panel, any questions? Yes, Carl?
I don't have any concern with, hold on just a second. I don't have any concern with what you want to do. I, I, when wrestling with the numbers, you indicated that you wanted to reallocate fifty spaces. The bylaw requires a hundred, how did you get the number fifty? Because you're going to provide a hundred and eighteen, plus fifty is a hundred and sixty-eight. Is that what you've got now?
Correct, yeah. So whereas the bylaw required a hundred and forty-two, we had initially proposed an abundance of it. We had a hundred and sixty-eight proposed.
Okay, and my understanding is nothing that you're asking for will reduce the number of parking spaces. It's just the allocation of that parking spaces.
Correct.
So I think that the word, the wording of the variance is, is subject to some misinterpretation. It sounds like you're going to provide a hundred and eighteen parking spaces. In fact, you're going to provide a hundred and eighteen parking spaces for residential uses. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks. I don't have trouble with that.
Question I had was, did you receive any comments from transportation services on the parking study?
Oh, we have not. We circulated everything through planning and no comments were received. We've had a few conversations with planning staff on this and nothing, nothing urgent came out of it. It was just to go through the standard CFA process on this.
All right, thank you. We're in committee. Are there any comments or do we have a motion? Peter?
I'm happy to bring a motion. I think this is a relatively technical change that has come about by the evolution of a project and the evolution of an area over time. And I'm satisfied with the findings that are provided in the parking report by WSP. And so I move to approve the variance with no conditions.
Seconder, Carl? All in favor? Have your approval, sir. Thank you. Number seven-twenty-two College Street. The purpose of this application is to alter the existing three-story building by enlarging the second-story mezzanine and balcony. The existing nightclub use requires approval of extension. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant. Mr. Ramos?
Yes, hi. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good afternoon. Terrific. Yes, my name is Richard Ramos. I'm the agent for the owners at seven-twenty-two College, JDC Property Management. My current address is sixteen Queen Elizabeth Boulevard, Toronto, Ontario. The request for the variances presented to you today are two variances under five-sixty-nine, two-thirteen, which is the permitted, I mean, A Club in a C-zone, which is one-point-zero, where it is permitted on a four-point-zero FSI. And the other one is in case of a nightclub to be located on the first floor, where we're proposing first floor and second floor of the mezzanine. And the older bylaw is the use of an entertainment facility. Now, in two thousand and two, the use of an entertainment facility was permitted through a CFA approval and it's been in use since two thousand and two, just called the mod club. Not sure if any committee members are familiar with it. Then in two thousand and sixteen, an addition to the mezzanine was added, which an approval was again granted by the Committee of Adjustments for the exact same three uses that we're proposing today, except they put, or the committee members had subject to a time period which would expire in December of two thousand and eighteen, which they allowed as an extension of two years for the use. During that time, unfortunately, the mod club had to disuse and the owners of the property have now re-rented the space in regards to the use has to be again applied to the Committee of Adjustments. What I'm requesting today is that the term of the lease is a ten-year lease for the tenants and we're requesting that the committee members grant us the same decision that was made in two thousand and sixteen for a ten-year term instead of a two-year term. We've had no concerns from neighbors, no objections. We've gone through noise criteria with the neighbors. Everybody's been satisfied. We've also received comments, or not comments, but reply back with no concerns from transportation as well.
Yeah, I, I don't see any, anything in these variances talking about ten years.
It's not requesting ten years. It's just we're requesting a change. I'm saying instead of putting a two-year term as the previous decision was granted, that I'm requesting an extension longer than two years. Otherwise, two years and back in front of committee but doesn't ask it for the same approval as prior.
Okay. All right, so we don't appear to have anything from planning or anybody else limiting. We just had the very, variations. And we don't have anything that says we should limit our, the approval. So, okay, we'll take it into a committee and we'll discuss this.
Yes, I'd like to start with a comment of Mr. Chairman just made. Usually when they put on condition is the, 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 the planning department's recommendation. You see how it will impact the neighborhood. And here is a brand, brand-new application and I, there's no recommendation from the building. I do not know whether we will, we will impose a condition ourselves. That's, that's up to us, I think.
It's what? Not up to us?
My, I, my comment is that the applicants indicated that there's a new tenant that's being proposed for this building, for this use. And I guess in the past year or two that what, the previous occupant is no longer there. So maybe there is some validity to impose a time limit because we have no, you know, just to ensure that everything goes well perhaps.
Possibly, yeah. I, I mean, I was thinking more that the, the building owners have shown a track record of managing this space well. Like, I, I think it is a, it has been an important space for music in the city. And so I would, and, and maybe, maybe we get back to the applicant, but I would assume that the owners do play a role in, in controlling this. I don't know. As a thought.
Yeah, but, but there's no.
I also agree with Yim. I think the original, I, I wasn't there, but I think the original idea between the, I, these time limits usually comes from planning and it's to test whether the use is going to create a problem. And it appears that the use hasn't so far created a problem. I, it seems to me that the people in the entertainment industry have been going through a great deal of, of difficulty during COVID. I'm reluctant to add yet another difficulty by limiting a variance for two years if in fact we could make it longer. So I'm, I'm open to making it slightly longer than two years.
I'm, I'm open to you not to have the limitation only because there's no guidance from the planning or any kind of report saying that, 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 that is our, our positions from the labor. And I, I think that any kind of time limit is, there's no baseline for us to say five years, ten years, or twenty years. And I, I rather leave it open if there's really problem. Then I think that we've already heard about it. There will be opposition in the labor. That, that's my, that's my point.
I, I, I agree with Yim that planning wanted a restriction, they would have told us about it. And so I don't think that we should assume that because it's an entertainment facility, we should put a, a limitation to it. So I would be in favor of just, if we're, if we're going to approve the variances, we approve them as it, as they are without any limitation.
Agreed.
All right, so let's have.
I agree as well.
Yeah, let's have a motion.
So I will have a motion to move for approval. I don't think there's any, any condition. There's no conditions.
No. Okay, do we have a seconder? Peter? Good. All in favor? Have your approval, sir. Thank you. Next item is six-ninety-five Richmond Street West. The purpose of the application is to alter the approved building permit plans for alterations to the existing detached dwelling by constructing a carport on the east side and modifying the front yard landscaping to accommodate a second driveway. With this application, we have just material submitted by the applicant. Mr. Cameron?
Oh, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Well, ladies and gentlemen of the panel, thank you for hearing me today. My name is Duncan Cameron. I am the agent for the owner of the eight thirty-three King Street West in Toronto, apartment four oh six. Essentially, what we have here is a renovation which has been already granted approvals and has a permit and is underway. There is an integral front garage with a driveway which has been approved. Next to that garage is a carport which has also been approved. It is basically a covered area leading towards the front door of the house. And what this variance is for is speaking about the soft landscaping versus hard landscaping. It is just one variance. We are asking for forty-seven percent coverage of soft landscaping in comparison to fifty percent coverage in soft landscaping. Obviously, I think it goes without saying that that is minor in terms of its nature. And previously, I have supported several documents, including a letter of support signed by the next-door neighbor and several other people who I've spoken to in the neighborhood. I also included a photo in supporting documentation. There you have it, yeah. So that is a street just to the south of thirty-one and thirty-three Mitchell Avenue. That shows zero soft scape in the front yard. Also with sort of integral front attached garages. And I was also able to research one previous decision of the committee which was located in a nearby street, just sounds like that one, on Whittaker Avenue, number twenty-six, which applied and was granted for zero soft scape coverage in the front yard. From, from the forty-seven percent, I mean, really, all right, we have a driveway that leads to a garage and we have a design which is concrete mixed in with grass for the secondary spot. Now, this spot is not over top of the walkway. It's a spot which I believe the owner of the house can now park two cars. And considering there is currently no parking in the house previously or prior to it being approved last year, I think what this does is it, it takes two parking spots that the owner previously would have street parking permits for, and he puts them on their property. And that should provide for more street parking permit passes for the rest of the neighborhood to enjoy. I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions. From my part, I, I did notice that there was one letter of objection. Uh, if you'd like to talk about that, um, I think, um, it's from, uh, Michael Worsland, who is a neighbor at six ninety Richmond Street West. Um, I think that there's maybe some confusion as to what the variance is that we're asking for here. Um, I, I, it states in the letter that he objects to the concrete driveway in the front of the proposed building, uh, but that's already been approved. Um, a- again, I guess what we're talking about today is just the soft versus hard landscaping.
Yeah. Uh, what about curb cuts? Are you go- are you gonna have two curb cuts?
It's, it's right now just a single curb cut. Um, the design, which you'll see in the, uh, in the site plan, um, it essentially, it's, the concrete comes from the one curb cut. And, um, so essentially, it splits into two different parking spots. You can, yeah, you can see it there in the photo on the right.
Okay, so-
There's a garage, which is ten feet, give or take ten feet on the right, and then a carport, which is give or take ten feet on the left of a twenty-foot wide building.
Okay, so it's, it's not gonna change anything in terms of curb cuts? Okay, thank you. Take it into committee now? Any, any comments, or is this pretty straightforward, we can have a motion? Yes, Peter? Peter?
Yeah, I actually have a, a question, um, for the applicant. It, it's about the curb cut. That I, looking at the site plan drawing, um, I can't see how the curb cut that's approved for the, for the garage, um, would be wide enough to accommodate this. Like, the, the two concrete pads are, for the, for the car to rest upon, for the carport, uh, are significantly south. So can, can the applicant please describe that? How, how the curb cut is not basically double-wide?
Well, I don't, I don't see where it says what the, how wide the curb cut is. It is in the site plan.
Okay, but I would, I would just assume that the curb cut would be nominally wider than the, what's, what's allowed for in the driveway. And then you've got these two other driveway portions that extend another, at least eight feet or so down that, so I, I can't see how you could have the ex, the, the kind of minimal curb cut and, and accommodate both of these.
Well, it, it's definitely, uh, enough for the one car, and it, I don't see the measurement for the curb cut, but you can see that the concrete is in a diagonal from the original approved curb cut. Um, and so it's, it, it's not exactly a space that's taking two cars' worth of curb cuts. Uh, the driver would come in from a diagonal, and then again, as well, there's a sidewalk there.
Well, I guess the question though is, is have you received approval from the city for the change to the curb cut?
I don't have that documentation with me. And I, I have to give you a little bit of background. Uh, the architect who originally, uh, designed this and went through the permit process, uh, unfortunately, has passed away. And so I'm, I'm kind of picking it up, I'm actually the, uh, the owner's realtor.
And you mentioned that, or that this could provide for more on-street parking, because now the owner won't park on the street, he'll park on his double driveways. But by widening the driveway, will there in fact be any, how much street parking is actually, will, will be available, given that the curb cut is now gonna be expanded?
Yeah, well, if you look at the site plan, there's a proposed carport in Bubble. And, um, you'll see, um, where the street is, that there's grass there. And so the concrete drive is just a strip. And there's a lot, considerable amount of grass there. It says nine foot six, uh, sorry, nine foot five, uh, nine feet of grass on the south, or sorry, east side. So, uh, this is not a, this is not a full double curb cut.
And so how much, how much space will be available on the street there to actually park a vehicle on the street? Nine feet, or, like, I'm trying to understand how you're actually providing more on-street parking, rather than actually just providing more parking for the owner on his property?
Well, it's because where the owner would be having, be, be forced to have a, uh, street parking permit, uh, now he'll be able to park on the carport, bringing up more street parking permits. And the curb cut, uh, is not a full double curb cut. It is just a nominal, uh, full, single curb cut with a diagonal concrete strip leading towards the interior of the property where the carport is.
That's, that's the point that Mr. Reed mentioned, and I agree with him. If, first of all, to put this in, into perspective, the carport as a space exists, you're not doing anything to add to that. Basically, we're talking about, uh, an approval to put two strips of concrete in on a diagonal to provide a driveway to that carport space. And that reduces the amount of landscaping on the front yard. That's what the variance is about, correct?
The variance is about, yes, it's the one variance, and it's from forty-seven.
Yeah.
Yes.
The larger issue, and, and it's, I appreciate that you're not conversant with this, because you've taken this over at the last minute. Um, as my panel member, uh, panel colleague indicated, you presumably have a curb cut approval for the original driveway. The, and, and we call it a driveway, but I, actually, I, I have to applaud your solution, which is two strips of concrete with grass in the middle, which is a very sensitive way of putting a driveway across green space. Um, I presume there is a curb cut for that. If you look at your, at the site plan, and you just extend the diagonal driveway out to the street line, there is no way that the space that then is created from the, the top of the, of the, uh, original driveway to the bottom of the proposed driveway, there's no way that that's a slightly larger, single curb cut. That's very close to a double curb cut. And the question that everybody is, is asking you is, do you have approval for this? This is a, this is a big curb cut.
I, I mean, as I sit here today speaking with you, I, I don't have that information. I can just see the measurements that are on the site plan, and I see ten feet plus three feet. So that's, I mean, twelve and a half feet of grass on the east side up from the property line. Um, I mean, the lot is twenty-five feet. There's grass on the east and west property line. We're not talking about a huge space, I don't, I don't believe. Nor are we talking about a large variance. And so I, I understand what you're saying, and, and that is, is this a double curb cut? I don't believe the answer is yes. Uh, and so I'm hoping that this will be approved.
And the, the, um, landscaping you've provided with those four concrete strip driveways is forty-seven point one percent, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so, uh, I, I see this as, uh, I mean, you know, we're being asked to approve, uh, a, a, a small shortfall in the soft landscaping. And, and I suppose, uh, Mr. Cameron, you got yourself in a little difficulty when you said it's gonna increase the number of parking spaces on the street, and then I started asking about curb cuts. And, and I assume we're gonna have two curb cuts here, so, uh, i- i- it's not really gonna improve the parking spaces on the street, but that's probably not our concern. Our concern is whether a soft landscaping reduction of two point nine, uh, percent is, is, uh, a minor variance, and I think it is, and I think we should go ahead and, and consider that, uh, on a motion.
Just, just a comment before the motion. Um, if I could say, I, I agree. I think the variance being requested is minor, obviously, right? It's a couple percent, but at the same time, I don't think it's desirable. I think it's gonna result in a much wider, wider curb cut, and I know the applicant's very strongly stating that it's just gonna be minorly or marginally bigger, but that's, that's not possible. Uh, it's gonna be at least, it's gonna be significantly larger, and that's gonna remove parking from the street, but also present, um, a typology that could result basically in two cars in the front yard, um, whether that's with permits or not. And I don't think that's a desirable, uh, solution for the neighborhood, so I won't be supporting this.
Yeah, I, I want to add my comment. I, I sort of, uh, on the line of, uh, what Peter just said, it's not about just the, uh, the landscape. Sometime when we consider this, uh, front yard, uh, parking is really with the contest. Some, some contests is, makes sense, they, they, they do it. But this one, the, unfortunately, it's not about the contest, it's about the lack of information. And I really think that maybe after, this is a zoning review, and then coming to a community assessment is really to pass the zoning approval. But, uh, I do not know whether the build, when they have to apply for building permit, they will actually catch the curb cut, because the curb cut, it seems that you still have to apply for curb cut. You cannot just go ahead and just do, do, do it yourself. And may, maybe there's some kind of missing step here, I'm not too sure.
I, um, I support Peter's position on this one. I think that, um, the variance requested is minor in numbers. Um, but this wouldn't be the first time that, uh, a small numbered variance has huge implications. And as Peter so aptly said, um, the implications of this are undesirable. And I, uh, I will support a motion to, uh, refuse this application on that basis.
And I, I would agree with those comments as well.
I find, I find it interesting that, uh, in view of the, uh, objections we get to, uh, applications with respect to parking on a street, that we don't have any objections here. So I'm, I'm surprised by it, unless people didn't understand that this would result in-
I think that's the issue.
-additional curb cut.
That's also, what, what is kept from us too? We do not, we do not see the marking of the curb cut and how it actually worked. I, 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 as, as is presented, I do not think that it can work with the widening it quite substantially, right? That, that's, that's my point.
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Cameron, just one question. Where is six ninety-five Richmond? How far west is it?
It's in between Taconte and Niagara, and it's on the south side of the street. And, um, Richmond is south of Queen and north of King. And it's by-lod, uh, to have integral front garages. Um, and there is a sidewalk. And so, you know, we're talking about the curb cut, but, and, and then the amount of grass. Um, there is a sidewalk where either way, whether there's curb cut or not, a car can enter and then make a slight veer, uh, left or right, having, in this case, it be a, a left, and, um, to one side or the other of the house. And so I, I really, I, I don't think even that the amount of the curb cut even applies, because either way, you're driving over the sidewalk before any of this variance even is, is picked up.
So why do you need a second concrete strip?
Just to not drive over the grass.
Originally, I thought when you said you, you weren't gonna in, decrease the number of parking spaces on the street, that, that you were gonna be able to use that single driveway to get into the garage and to access the carport.
So this, this is refused, and the owner's second car has to be parked on the street, which will reduce the amount of parking on the street. And, uh, and I, I guess that'll be via a parking pass. He'll have a sticker on his window, and he'll be parked on the street.
Okay, alright, any further-
You can park one car in the carport and one car in the driveway. There's two parking spaces.
Not in the garage, you can park a, it's intended to park inside the garage. And then the carport is next to the garage. And both would be off of the sidewalk, because you're not allowed to park in the sidewalk. And so I really think that if there wasn't a sidewalk, then your points would be more valid. Uh, but there is a sidewalk, and, um, the cars will be well into the house. And, uh, in fact, under the coverage of a, of a carport and under the coverage of an integral front garage. And so I do believe this will allow for more parking on the street. Otherwise, he, he'll, you know, be forced to put a sticker on the windshield, and, um, he'll be parked out front on the street, um, three hundred and sixty-five days of the year, which will take away one spot on the street.
Yeah, but what we're saying is a curb cut, and it, that you're gonna need an additional curb cut, and that'll take away the parking spot anyhow.
I don't believe that an additional curb cut would be necessary.
Well, how are you gonna get, how are you gonna ac- if you got two concrete driveways, how are you gonna access the, uh, uh?
It, it's one that turns into two. It's one that turns into two.
One curb cut turns into two on the property?
Yes, the car sits in the same spot, and, uh, this way you'll have concrete to drive on to the left, or concrete to drive on to the right, instead of grass, to the left.
Can we go back to that, uh, diagram you showed us? Cause I didn't quite see it that way.
Uh, if the technician can bring us to-
Yeah.
Uh, so here's the site plan, but there's actually a rendering that explains this as well.
Okay, well, let's, let's, you tell us which, which thing is gonna show it to us best?
So, in the top right of the, the plan, uh, so the supporting documents says, um, C A plans. And there's a photo with a, a diagonal that goes, so, concrete and grass that goes straight into the garage, and then a diagonal concrete and grass that comes from the beginning of the first driveway. And both of those will be having to have passed over the sidewalk.
Alright, so let us, show us where that is, cause I, I didn't see that.
Um,
Can you tell-
I'm sorry, I, I, I only see the diagram in the top right of the supporting documents, um, that is titled C A plans.
Can you find that, Tiffany?
And I, I, I wish I hadn't, uh, provided this in a larger, uh, format, but it is there currently in the top right. And you'll see it on, right next to it, is the house as it sits currently, the sidewalk that's in question, and the grass that's in question. You can see that, uh, making a right turn over the sidewalk, your car is positioned to go straight into the garage, or over the sidewalk, make a veer to the left and to underneath of the carport.
So-
And so I, I really think that the, the size of the car, the curb cut is not even really, um, consequential. Uh, it's really, it's just a starting point.
Well, you're saying-
It's only consequential from the point of view that it's, the larger the curb cut, the less street parking, that's the point that's being made. So if the curb cut is larger than a single curb cut, you're going to be losing some street parking. I think that's the, the connection that's being made.
I, I get it, I totally appreciate that. Uh, I, I don't believe that that's the case. I mean, perhaps what's throwing us off are these straight designs of strips of concrete. I mean, if it was a curved one, I think maybe we wouldn't have issue with it.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think that's right. I, I can't.
Uh, you gotta slide a bit to the right. If, if you click the right once, there you go. And now you're staring right at it. So right where the, the hood of that car is, you're going in once. And then you can go straight where the garage will be to the right side of the building. Or after you pass the sidewalk, you turn your wheel to the left and you go to the left side of the building. And so it's really just one curb- And so it's really just one curb cut is what we're speaking about here. Um, I, I don't think that there's a, I mean, even if you wanted to have a sort of a condition, uh but I really don't see what the issue is because either way you're going through the same, you're driving over the same part of the, the sidewalk.
Well, I think the commi- committee members are looking at the site plan and there isn't just one driveway entrance. If you pull into the driveway and go straight into the proposed garage, that's one thing. But you're not passing the sidewalk and then veering left because if you look at the proposed driveway on the site plan, it shows it next to that driveway. Not the same driveway entrance.
And seeing three foot six of grass and then another measurement of nine foot five of grass, and then I'm seeing a strip saying concrete driveway at three point one.
So see here, there's the driveway that goes straight. The other driveway doesn't use the same entrance, it has its own separate um lead-in portion. You're not crossing the sidewalk and then turning left. The sidewalk will be part of the driveway. And that means, that's why the committee members are saying the curb cut will be wider than a single driveway access. That's the point they're trying to tell you.
They're saying...
Can I also add to that? Um, Barbara is right, uh what it is, is not, I, I don't think the panels are rejecting your, your analysis. Uh it's only that it's not proven or proof on drawings and it's very hard for us to agree to that, uh the curb cut, the existing curb cut will work for this arrangement. Maybe if you have a better drawing to prove that, I do not think we have problem with that. I just don't see it.
Is there some sort of a circumstance in where there could be a condition uh with the approval? Um, I mean, I'm looking at the design and I, I, I think that, I understand what you're saying, but I also think that it, you know, just a little modification then it, it changes everything.
I can't, I can't see based on this drawing how you can only have one curb cut, cause I don't see how you get from one driveway to the other. Where, where do you...
Mr. Chairman, it looks to me as though we're at a bit of an impasse. I, I think, I, I don't think it's possible. What we need is a designer to basically, as, as Barbara said, um you're bringing a car in on the two um strips of concrete that go to the garage. So the front wheels of the car are now over the property line and they're still on those two parallel pieces of concrete. In order to access the carport, the car has to then turn and access the carport right in the front yard. And the, that looks like it's a very difficult uh turn to make. It can maybe be that it's possible if you go really slow, uh but, but I don't know and I don't know that we're gonna solve it today. I think there's only two solutions here, two alternatives. One, the application is denied or the application's approved subject to the um, there being only a single curb cut to the satisfaction of the City of Toronto Development Engineering or whoever it is that's approved curb cuts. Um, and then if it turns out that, that the applicant's correct that you can make it work, um and, and it's only one curb cut, then the concerns of the committee have been addressed. The applicant's objective has been um uh supported, um and we could move forward. But I don't think there's another alternative other than those two.
Uh what about deferred? This, this, this suggests another set of options.
We've already spent so much time on this. If, if it was gonna be deferred, it should have been deferred on the beginning.
Yeah, yeah, let's not, let's not defer it. So Carl, why don't you make a motion with the condition? Cause uh...
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I, I would, I would happy to do that. I'd like to move approval of the application subject to access to the driveway, to the garage and the carport being from a single um curb cut um of a size to be approved by the City of Toronto uh Traffic Engineering Department.
Could, could I just offer uh an amendment? I, I, I'm concerned that a single curb cut could be interpreted by transportation to be a, a very wide curb cut or a very narrow curb cut.
A double, yes.
So if we could say a sing- um, whatever you, you would suggest, but something like a curb cut for the, the regular size of a single car garage or, or standard or something like that?
S- single car dimensions.
Yeah, for a, a single car, standard single driveway curb cut dimensions.
One, yeah, one, uh, single car curb cut. Something for that.
I'm having trouble with this. I feel like we're kind of going, trying to bend over backwards to make this work and I have a lot of problems with this. I, I counted four meters wide driveway at the, at the street line, uh on a seven point six meter wide lot. I, I don't think that's appropriate and will not result in um any additional on-street parking. So I, I cannot support any approval of this uh the way it's being presented.
Carl, you were making a motion...
I would support it with the condition as long as the condition is, is very tightly worded. I'm just not sure what that wording is. But I, I agree, I think that this is problematic as it stands.
I, I, I would support uh Peter's idea only because if you put a very specific condition, it's actually addressing the, the real issue. But you do, uh we, we refuse the application, you are talking about landscaping. So I rather put in a condition and have that approved.
Yeah.
But now you can make the motion again with the condition.
Except I'm not sure of the wording either. I'm wondering if the Deputy Secretary Treasurer has a suggestion. You know what we're trying to do. Have you got a suggestion for the wording we need to use?
Um, it's tricky because it's on, at this point, it's on city property and we don't have something from Transportation Services.
But we're saying it's for their approval.
I know, but they may not be willing to sign off on it if they didn't ask for the condition. Um... The width, the width of any proposed curb cut shall be limited to a single, a driveway accommodating a single car? I don't know, something like that.
Yes, actually, um, uh, I, I, the standard width of a driveway for a parking spot is two point six meter, but I'm, I'm not the Transportation Department. I only know that by, by, by uh working on, on this kind of project, but you can put in two point six, that's very standard, is the width of a parking spot.
Okay, so we could say we approve it subject to uh a, a, the, the proposed curb cut not exceeding two point six meters wide.
Well, subject to there being only one curb cut, that's the other thing. It's to only, only one curb cut and then add the specific, specifics.
Not exceeding two point six meters wide. Okay.
And then to the satisfaction of the Transportation Department.
Yes, I think that's very important, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, do we have a second here?
I'll second that.
All right, Peter. All right. All in favor? Nimrod, you're opposed? Okay, you have your approvals, you have your conditional approvals, sir. Thank you. Next application is thirty-nine Derwin Road and the purpose of this application is to construct a new two-story detached dwelling with an integral garage, a front porch, a rear deck and a basement walkout. And with this application, we have material submitted by the applicant plus opposition from uh the three properties on Derwin Road. Mr. Gain?
Yes, sir, I'm here. My name is Trevor Gain. I am the applicant here on behalf of the owner.
Okay, thank you. You better tell us about this, we have some opposition.
Yes, sir. So this uh exactly what you mentioned, this is an application to take down the existing bungalow, construct a new two-story dwelling with an integral garage. We're asking for four variants to achieve this. Uh, if I can get my site plan up on the screen, there, this area, there's a predominant redevelopment that's been happening in this area for about the last fifteen, twenty years, this area of East York. And typically, there's two different types of housing types that are resulting for this, either with or without an integral garage. Generally, the, without the garages, the, the bungalows are extended backwards, they're extended up, the driveway is maintained and the parking is, is maintained in the, in the rear of the property. On average, you know, those variances, the floor space index are anywhere from the sixty to seventy percent range. And then the alternatives, when homeowners uh elect to do an integral garage, generally those are the, the tear downs, uh just because it's hard to maintain the fifty percent retained walls for renovation. And the house is sort of expanded to the allowable setbacks. This allows for a little bit more desirable space on the second floor because we could build over top of the garage and have better bedrooms. And then again, on average, the floor space index kind of jumped to a seventy, eighty percent just because we're sort of occupying part of that existing driveway space. So our application before you is the latter. We're proposing the integral garage, which is the desirable house type of my client. Um, the house situates from the allowable setbacks, it's a four-bedroom home. We've also squeezed in a living room space above the garage, kind of in a reduced ceiling. This is a desirable uh add-on, I guess we can call it. It creates a front window in the front of the house, it provides a connection for the homeowners to the street, it allows light into the house, and of course, that additional floor does bump up the GFA a little bit. Based on the, we have a two-story houses on each side of us, both of them are, are top-up renovations. Uh, number thirty-one, sorry, thirty-seven to the south of us, you can see this, the existing setbacks, they're forty-five centimeters uh from the property line and then we have the existing driveway of number forty-one to the north of us. So with that, we kind of oriented our windows uh towards this kind of large spatial separation. Um, we extended our house, like I mentioned a few times, to the, the allowable setbacks. But once we pass the garage or this living room, dining room space, which you see on your screen right now, um, the house steps back twelve inches, point three meters, and that allows for a window to have the one point two meter spatial separation as required by the building code. Um, I'll just wrap up by saying that this application was part of a pre-circulation with the city planning. Uh, we worked very closely with them uh to provide no setbacks, um no building length, no landscape variances. And if you can continue to scroll to, uh, to page five, which is the front elevation, we have a height variance, a kind of minimal. Uh, basically, our height variance is to eight point eight nine meters, which is the top of that parapet that you see on the upper left. You can go to the next page, page six. That bump up is only for the garage portion and then it drops down to about eight point five nine meters uh for the majority of the house. And uh that's a, uh, a six centimeter height variance or nine centimeter height variance, rather, uh from what is allowed. So uh overall, uh we feel that we designed the house and the requested variances are minor and um they're in keeping with very similar approvals that are happening all over this area of East York.
So Mr. Gain, is, is this uh standard on the street, second story, two-story buildings?
Yeah, uh like I said, predominant redevelopment over the last fifteen, twenty years, so there's uh all these kind of bungalows over time are slowly being redeveloped and like I mentioned, they're either the second floor top-ups, rear additions or, or tear downs. And um you can go in any direction on any street and a few blocks and you'll see a wide range of housing types from more Victorian, more pitched roofs, more flat roofs, housed. There's a predominant shift to kind of the more modern contemporary houses, even in my own practice. I probably did three contemporary homes in the first fifteen years and now pretty much every single one of my clients are looking for this type of housing type, uh just because they're looking for something different, I think.
Okay, so have you uh discussed this uh project with the adjacent neighbors? Cause they're both here opposing it.
We have not uh talked to them. We worked, because of planning, uh we worked with them and ultimately they got, uh, we have no opposition, no opposition from planning, so they feel that the house was in keeping with the neighborhood. Uh, the owner actually is stuck in Aruba. He was uh planning to head out and talk to the neighbors. He's owned this house for many, many, many years, uh but uh he could not do that because he's still out of the country today.
So did he actually live there?
No, it's a rental.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Panel, do you have any questions? Okay, let's move on to Mr. Lee.
Hello, hello, can you hear me very well?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, I would like to thank the Committee of Adjustments for allowing me to speak today. And I really appreciate the opportunity to voice my concerns regarding the proposed development at thirty-nine Derwin Road. My name is, my name is Mike Lee and I live at thirty-seven Derwin Road with my wife and two children. My house is located beside the proposed development. My family has lived on the street for over twenty-two years and we were the third house on our side of the street to add a second floor in two thousand and twelve. So I'm not opposed to the new development. But in contrary to what Mr. Gain just said, now what, but in the planning and during the process of building our home, we first consulted our neighbors, planning department and contracted to build a home to our liking, but at the same time tried to respect and consider the needs of our immediate neighbors and their neighborhood. But the property developers have done none of that. Uh, I, I totally disagree with Mr. Gain as I said. Instead, the property developers, in over three years they have owned the property of thirty-nine Derwin, have done none of that, but instead they have been irresponsible landlords who are considered to bring havoc, chaos and frequent police involvement.
So Mr. Lee, we're here dealing, our mandate, our mandate is not to deal with the history...
Yes, I know, I know. Yes, and now they plan to make a management building essentially what would be to me a warehouse, a monster home, that would take the whole lot and leaving a small patch of grass in the front and the back of the house. Allowing this to be built would change the physical and emotional character of this neighborhood and infringe on the peace, tranquility, financial investment and the safety of the immediate neighbors. And my main concern is the sheer size of the proposed house. When we built our home in two thousand and twelve, the norm on our street was to ask for a floor space index variance of point five nine, point one four, greater than the permitted size. That would be less than thirty percent greater than the bylaw permitted. And then this was essentially the community norm for renovating new house. The property owner is asking to build a house that is eighty-two percent greater than the bylaw permits. Now I'm referring here to the floor space index variance. Essentially, the property developer is asking to build a house that is double the size of what is permitted, double the size. This means the property developer is asking for a variance that's essentially over a hundred sixty percent of what we asked for. Now, all of the renovated homes follow a certain pattern, they're all set back around the same distance, as well, they all maintain their driveway and allow the neighbor to continue to use point five one meters of their house to park their car safely. There's some consistency, space and disrespect to the neighbors and as a result, most of this stability and peace. The sheer size of this large proposed house will have a direct negative impact on how my family enjoys our property. The property owners who are contractors plan to build a wider house by building on, building on the present driveway, build higher and extend, extend back across me ten feet farther than our home. And my backyard is about forty feet in length, with the new house extending ten feet back with a height of twenty-four feet, this will mean almost one-fourth of my backyard will face a wall. Rather to that, my family's misery would be the depth of their building, which will start six point five meters high and then it would extend back another eight feet. Now what this will mean is that the entire view from my backyard will be an enormous wall plus a... plus a deck where my new neighbor can peer over the fence and see not only in our backyard, but also through our large windows and French doors in the back of our house. The large structure will also drastically reduce sunlight into my backyard. Now, we already have two very large pine trees in the middle of my backyard, another pine tree in my neighbor's to the back, and a two-story house on the other side of my home. But nevertheless, I've spent a lot of money and effort to grow plants and grass and trees to make this backyard a little oasis for my family. And this proposed house, in its width, length, and height, will block much of the sunlight into my backyard. This proposed house will have a direct mental health impact on my family. It will prevent us from enjoying our backyard, feel comfortable in our own home. It will also be a financial burden as it will make our house and backyard a little less attractive to possible future buyers. So in conclusion, I ask, what is desirable about building such a large monster house which will tarnish the neighborhood for a financial and mental health burden for the immediate neighbors and create the environment for friction, anger, and animosity, other than allow one property developer, who may or may not even plan to live in this house, make more money, at what be at the expense of others? Now, I am sure the property owner knows that he may not get all eighty-two percent variance and make the other changes that has been proposed.
Mr. Lee. All right, Mr. Lee, your time is up. Please wrap up.
Okay. Essentially, I ask, please, I get asked, the pleased committee adjustment must restrict the floor space index to a thirty percent increase and restrict the lot coverage of point-four or point-ten. It should not be built such a large home, which will essentially punish the neighborhood and make life difficult for the immediate neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Miss, any questions, panel? Mr. Preston.
Hello, committee?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. I would like to thank the committee of adjustments for allowing me to speak today. I really appreciate this opportunity. And if Tiffany can go to my presentation that we submitted, it's the letter of objection, the one with the download. It's two-point-zero-five megabytes, so she can pull that up. That'd be great.
Mr. Preston, can we have your name and address for the record?
Oh, Brett Preston, forty-one Derwin Road, East York, Toronto.
Thank you.
So maybe I'll just keep speaking until she brings it up. As you can see from the photo, we live beside the proposed development. We've lived on the street for eighteen years, and we renovated our home in two thousand and fifteen. When we renovated our home, we reached out to our neighbors and also city planning to ensure our build had minimal impact. The reason I asked to speak today is not because I'm against building on the lot. It's that the proposed variances are so outside the norm for our street, and the build will directly impact us in four ways. First, financial. The building height will shade our solar panels, leading to a significant reduction in power generation, which impacts our income and has an adverse effect on the flight, the fight against climate change. Usable space, the massive size of the structure means we will lose use of our driveway, one-hundred-and-eight square feet of usable property, because the property developer is not adhering to community norms where we share our property with the adjoining neighbors. Enjoyment of our backyard, as Mike said, the massive size of the structure will significantly reduce the enjoyment of our backyard. And privacy, the deck above the fence line will significantly reduce privacy. It'll also mean we have lost our investment in our fence. I have a fence if somebody could just peer over it. So if Tiffany can skip to page ten, please, that would be great. In two thousand and fifteen, we installed a thirty-thousand-dollar solar system. The system was designed to clear the shadow of any house that conforms to East York Development bylaws. If we can skip to page eleven.
Okay, so.
Nope, that's not it.
Mr., yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's it. Great. If we could just skip forward to page eleven, that would be great. So we commissioned a solar study that revealed, as you can see, we have solar panels on our house, that revealed that it would shade our solar panels by fifteen percent per year, meaning that an average fifteen percent loss in revenue over the remaining fifteen years of our contract. So when we made this investment, this expensive investment, we were relying on Sony to protect our investment. Clearly, fighting climate change is a key goal for the city and the earth, and I hope the committee will take that into consideration. If we can skip now to page four. The property developer was asking to build a house that is eighty-two percent larger than the bylaw permits. And the first test on the, which I see you guys get this argument a lot, the first test is outlined on the public hearing notices that the committee of adjustment must be satisfied that the variance is minor. So if we skip to page five, we commissioned a small study. I run a research company and asked ten random Torontonians, or twenty random Torontons, whether they thought increasing in building size by eighty-two percent was a major or minor change. A hundred percent felt that this was a significant or major change. In our view, this variance request is not minor and should not be heard at this committee. And that, I was listening earlier today, and your decision on one-twenty-one Durant in terms of the mass of the house is too large, and you guys refused the variance. I completely concur with that. And just keep in mind that this house is actually larger than what they requested in that one. And if we can now go to page six, the property developer is asking for one-hundred-and-sixty percent more floor space than we did, and the community norm is point-five-nine on our street, or thirty percent change. The other houses are perfectly aligned because they're similarly sized. So if you look at, if you go back up a page in figure eleven, you can almost see that all the renovations are done almost identically on the street, except for this one would be a big variance from that. And then if we go to page seventeen, so what is the impact of having such a large house as well as lot coverage, which is also one-hundred-and-sixty percent more than we asked for when we developed it two thousand and fifteen? First, we will lose our driveway. So if we go to page seventeen there, which is one-hundred-and-eight square feet of usable property, because the property developer is not adhering to community norms. So we allow our neighbor on the other side of us at forty-three Derwin to use point-five-one meters of our property for their driveway, as always been the custom in our neighborhood. And the drawing suggests that the developer is reclaiming this property and has put soft landscaping in our driveway. And we have no, obviously, we would never go to our neighbor at forty-three and reclaim our space so that they couldn't use their driveway. It just doesn't make any sense. It should also be noted that the developer falsified the committee documents by misrepresenting the location of the curb cut to make it look like we did not use this space as our driveway. If we skip to page twenty-one, second, our backyard is only twenty feet in length because we have a shed at the back of our lot. The proposed house will be, as Mike said, ten feet beyond our building line, plus an additional.
Did we lose them?
Hi, hi Brett. We may have lost you there. Can you hear us?
Privacy perspective, the deck above the fence line will significantly reduce investment in our frames, in our fence. So if we go to, skip to page twenty-seven, I can speak directly to what the agent suggested in summary. The variance should be rejected, rejected, and a more reasonable development plan should be proposed, which considers the existing neighborhood structures and impacts on the surrounding houses. And if you can see here, there's no side-by-side driveways in any of the renovations. Everybody maintains the driveway space. Nobody has an integral garage. So yeah, this is completely out of the norm for our side of the street. And if you look on Google Maps, you can confirm that. Thank you. Thanks, committee. You did a great job. I listened for six hours today.
All right. Thank you.
I had a question for the speaker. Can he just explain that driveway issue again? I did not understand exactly what's being proposed relating to the driveway.
Oh, yeah. So what slide is that on? So if we go to slide seventeen, yeah, so here, so as you can see, this is my actual survey over here. And you can see here that, like, the way that the driveway works is that my neighbor uses point-five meters of our property, and then we use point-five-one meters of the existing property, and this goes all the way down the street. I'm not sure why it's been that way, but apparently, it's been there since nineteen fifty. And so if you take that away, we can no longer park safely or even get down our driveway. So that's what, like, we're for building, but when we saw this proposal, it's like everything is just completely out of whack.
So is that, is that, is that a mutual driveway?
No, it's just for our own use. In the same way, our neighbors have their own driveway for their own use as well. They just use a portion of our property. It's on the other side, yeah.
Is there, is, is your, does your deed say that you have the right to use a portion of your neighbor's property, and their deed says they have a right to use a portion of your property for the purpose of driving your car to the rear of your property or parking on it?
That's a good question. I'm not sure.
You should, you should look, you should, I mean, when you're dealing with this, you should consult with a lawyer to see what your rights are, because if it's a, if it's a mutual driveway, they're not entitled to, they can do certain things, but they can't defeat the purpose for which it was intended to deed it.
Okay. It just seems that if, if that was the case, and you could reclaim that space, then it would have a cascading effect on the whole neighborhood, where people would be reclaiming property from their neighbors, and clearly, that wouldn't be a advantageous situation.
That's why Mr. Solomon didn't understand what you were talking about with respect to the driveway. And frankly, either do I. If it's their property, they can deal with it. If it's a mutual property over which you have a right of way, they can't deal with it that way, unless you don't use it. But you're telling us you use it.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so, thank you. Mr. Gaines.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Can I get my, the survey, the submitted survey on the screen? I can speak to about the driveway as well, and you are correct, there is no easement. If we can just zoom in right between number forty-one and thirty-nine. Mr. Preston is correct. It's kind of one of these situations in East York, and it's all over this area that the driveways, they sort of overpaved, we'll call it, you know, between walls, and everybody uses the driveway, and he's right. It's been like that since the fifties. And to tell you the truth, we have no problem with that because it's the opposite side of the house. It doesn't really matter. City planning, however, had a completely different opinion, and they did not like the overpaving in the front yard because it created landscape variances. So right now, in the world of soft landscaping, they wanted us to remove that portion of paving and put back the grass. So to enable, achieve favorable reply from them, we conform. Further on this survey, I would just like to point out, right between the two houses, you see the word roof with a spot elevation of one-fifty-eight-eighty-nine. Just make mental note of that. I'll talk to about that in a few minutes. And I'm not sure if Mr. Preston parks in the backyard. You saw the fence that he proposes and whether he drives back there or not. Maybe he has a front yard parking pad. I can't speak to that. But it's very common, you know, the adequate parking space for all of these type of bungalows driveway is the backyard, but almost nobody does it just because of the narrowness, whether a mutual drive or not, and they park in the front. Either they've just been parking there long-term, or it's an actual approved parking plan. So if I could get my site plan back up, please? So I'm going to speak to about the building length. This drawing is generated a hundred percent from our survey. You can see the building length of number thirty-seven, number forty-one, and our proposed building in the middle. I will note that we are only one-point-six-seven meters behind number thirty-seven, which is actually five foot six, not eight feet or ten feet, as Mr. Lee mentioned. And we're one-point-eight-seven meters behind number forty-one. So we're not extending any further back excessive. We're actually, like I mentioned before, we have no minor variances for building length or rear yard setback. We're actually, the existing setback, as Mr. Preston mentioned, on the side yard was point-five-one, and we're actually pushing that further south to point-nine. So the spatial separation for his car, if we drive over that little front section, actually increases. Further, along with the site plan, the floor space index, as I mentioned, detached garage, integral garage, that generates a bunch of things. From my calculation, based on the footprint here, number thirty-seven is about a sixty-four percent floor space index, number forty-one, my calculation is about sixty-two. So both of which are over the forty-five percent allowed zone. Both of them are completely within keeping of a bungalow, rear addition, top-up with the driveway on the side. Coincidentally enough, in our case, the floor space index, like I mentioned, we have, we squeezed a room above the garage, the living room. If I delete that out and actually just have like a very tall garage, so our front elevation would just be a garage door, a front door, and second-floor windows, our floor space index would drop down to seventy-four percent. So that little living room, kind of just the amenity space for the homeowners, just bumps up our floor space index to point-eight-two. The overall massing, there is no change. The height could be the same, the setbacks can be the same. We just have a tall garage. If the owner so much wants to put a parking stacker, then maybe that's the option they would do. Can I get my, can you scroll down to page five, the elevations? So I'll speak to it briefly again. We have a height variance at the top of that parapet. And going back to that spot elevation on the survey, the ridge at number forty-one is one point, or one-fifty-eight-point-eight-nine. The top of our roof is one-fifty-eight-nine-five. That's like, that's a six-centimeter height variance. So I don't think we're towering over the neighbors at all. Am I able to put up Mr. Preston's presentation? Am I able to get that on? Ideally, page twelve. So he's talking about the solar energy. So here, he's showing the rear elevation of his house on the left, the front elevation of our house on the right, and how much taller ours is. But pay attention to the grade line on this little graphic. You know, his is about eighteen to twenty-four inches lower than our dark line. So it kind of makes it look like our house is kind of towering. Also, the rear elevation of number forty-one is a hip roof, which, again, looks a little bit less massing. But if we can scroll back up to page one of Mr. Preston's presentation, you'll see that the front elevation has a large gable that goes from side to side. So in a two-D elevation, perhaps his massing might be more in keeping with ours. And further to this question, I don't know if we can zoom in on that photograph a little bit. Let's look at the shadowing that number forty-one is casting on number forty-three directly to the left. You'll notice that that roof isn't complete direct sunlight, and there's only shadowing on the side walls. So my question to Mr. Preston is that how would our two-story dwelling, which is over three-meter separation between dwellings, a six-centimeter height difference, is casting shadows over his solar collectors? I don't think there is. Furthermore, about the deck, I'll just remind the committee, our deck is one-point-nine-nine meters above grade. We have no variance for that deck, as of right projection in the size and in its location. And just to sum everything up, I'll just say, yes, this is a change from the current bungalow that's been in the street that the neighbors have been enjoying, looking over for the past six years while they built their houses. And yes, there's minor variances to build this house. This is an area that's been in transition for over twenty-some years now. It's a desirable, family-oriented neighborhood, and my client is looking to build a desirable, family-oriented home. Thank you.
I have a question to the applicant, to Mr. Okay, my question is, you have not reduced the width of the existing driveway physically, right? You only reduced it by introducing some soft landscaping at the front of, if you go to your site plan, the shaded area, is that a new soft area? You only, you reduce it by, or are you reducing it because of the garage you're sticking out a bit? My question is that whether they can still use the driveway?
Yeah, we have no option. So city planning wants soft in that spot. So ideally, we could pave it from the south end of our driveway all the way to our property line. But that creates a landscape variance.
Deficiency, right? So in fact, yeah. If they use the existing driveway, they just basically have to drive over that new soft landscaping, right?
Yeah, and the word soft landscaping, it doesn't have to be grass. It could be, you know, we could put permeable pavers. It could be some gravel. Ideally, I think what the city is after is just obviously something permeable to allow water to absorb opposed to an asphalt driveway.
Yeah, so just to clarify, soft landscaping actually means soft. So gravel or permeable pavers do not count towards soft landscaping?
Okay.
All right, but the important point.
Just to clarify, if you indicated that in your own, your own preference, you wouldn't mind taking that soft landscaping and making it available so that the person next door could use it on their driveway. But that does create a variance for you for soft landscaping. Is that correct?
It creates a, I think our soft landscaping right now, we're at like ninety-one percent soft, so we have quite a bit. And I don't have the number in front of me, but we would probably create a landscape variance. We need fifty percent of the front yard to be open space. And I think that will, that will trigger an additional variance.
Does the driveway width, is it required by bylaw? Or can you reduce the driveway width? Or can you reduce the driveway width? Because as you approach the garage, you, you, you're actually driving in a space that's narrower than that driveway. If you look at your own elevations, the, the doorway doesn't actually cover, as, as in all cases, doesn't cover the entire frontage of the garage. It, there's a, there, there's space on either side. So you could in fact put a strip of landscaping that was, that extended from that area beside the garage door. Uh, but does that put you in another variance problem with the width of the driveway?
Yeah, I can't answer that, you know, in this kind of quick mention, but the, the width of our driveway, the three point three meters is the maximum. I think the way the bylaw works is that your driveway can be as wide as the parking space inside the garage. So our garage is three point three meters, which is an as of right parking space for an integral garage. And thus, we just brought the, the, the driveway the same width. So I think we can go down to, I think, three meters is the, is the minimum, um, for, for driveway leading to an integral garage, two point six if you're going into the backyard. Um, but through you, Mr. Chair, I, I can't give you an answer, you know, if, I know exactly what you're saying if we just put a little-
I'm just wondering if you could recapture the space there, and then the gentleman next door could use it to drive on, uh, if you, if you paved it?
Yeah, it's always, sure, it's a possibility. In theory, it, it looks like it would work, wouldn't it? Like, just looking at that elevation, the distance from the property line to the wall and the wall from the garage door, uh, it's pretty close. And then, like I said, that wall is actually forty-one centimeters south. So, um, the space that, that Mr. Preston was originally talking about was, is actually, um, you know, closer to the property line than, than our actual, uh, which is, which is three feet away, point nine meters away now.
Okay.
So the, the point-
Thank you.
The point of that strip and what was or was intended to be the neighbor's driveway is, is, is not part of his driveway. It's property owned by the applicant's client. And, and, uh, it's not a mutual driveway. So, uh, the city required them to make it soft landscaping. So if he's, he, Mr. Gain appears prepared to work with the neighbor to, uh, accommodate him, but he doesn't necessarily have to do that.
Yeah, uh, if you want me to comment on that, we have no problem. Like, uh, our original intent was to, uh, over pave it in quotations, but, uh, we hit lots of, uh, rejection, or not rejection, but, um, opposition from, from city staff.
Yeah. Okay. So, uh, panel, any further questions to Mr. Gain? Okay, we can move into committee. Have any comments? Do we have a motion?
Oh, oh, my, my comment is, uh, yeah, it's kind of strange. It's about the driveway. I was thinking that in terms of mitigate the impact on the next-door neighbor, at least this current driveway width should be kept. And I, 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 I think that will, that will work for the next-door neighbor, um.
Yeah, I, I don't think that's part of our variances, though. Um, Jim?
I understand, but we, can we not put it as a condition that the existing driveway paved areas should be kept? I, 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 I don't know. No, what I, what I see is that this, this, uh, this, uh, application seems that they have not gone through, uh, the consultation with the labels. If they have done that, maybe this can be easily solved, uh, in the beginning, um.
Yeah, it may not be something we can make a condition. We can recommend to Mr. Gain. I think he's already got a sense of it that he should be cooperating with his neighbors. Yes, Peter?
I think to that driveway issue, I think it's not clear either. Like, I think that there's still maybe, uh, there may be enough room for the neighbor to still fit his car even with that loss of a couple, of, of a couple feet or a half or whatever. I, I, from the photos, it looks like, I mean, they wouldn't be stepping out onto their pavement maybe, but maybe under the grass, but I think that the parking can still remain, possibly, yeah. Anyway, just a couple of comments on the actual application. I, I understand, um, that the neighbors are, you know, not necessarily big fans of this, but I think it is a reasonable request, and I, I think that the, you know, the differences in depth are, are relatively minor between these houses, and that has kind of evolved over the years. I, I think it's relatively restrained for what, what, what it could be, and I'm going to be supporting it.
Any, any other comments? Yes, Carl?
Um, the applicant, uh, when he started, he explained that there are two ways in which bungalows are being redeveloped. This is one, and the other is to, um, extend up and to put parking in the backyard. Um, I wish that he'd elected to go the second way. I think that that, if you look at the street and you look at the existing properties, that's the pattern that's there already. And I think that that is a more appropriate pattern, um, than what the applicant has elected to do here. Having said that, I don't think that the, um, the proposal that's before us is, is, is horrendously bad, and I don't believe that it is out of keeping with what we've been approving, generally speaking. Um, so I would somewhat reluctantly be supporting it. I just feel professionally, I need to say, I think of the two options, the applicant chose the wrong one.
Okay. Do we have any further comments, or do we have a motion?
I'll put forward a motion to approve with no conditions, please.
All right, do we have a seconder? Jim?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor? Have your approval, sir. Thank you. Next application is number eighteen, is, uh, number eighty-eight. Pardon me. Eighty- Is eighty-two or ninety? Ninety-two Isabella Street. It's okay, I, I, I can't read. "To alter the existing three-story office, build bank constructing a new elevator and a new dormer over the elevator shaft. With this, we have material submitted by the applicant only." Mr. Lay.
Oh, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good afternoon, committee. My name is Harry Lay. I'm a practicing architect in Toronto. And, uh, my client runs an office, a commercial use of, uh, ninety-two Augusta, which is a flamboyant, uh, late nineteenth-century Queen Anne style of semi-detached building. Uh, beautiful building with a fantastic interior, um, which is, uh, worth a visit when your next, uh, doors open. Uh, the front rooms are fantastic. The rear of the building, it consists of a number of, uh, utility rooms without any, um, any architectural merit at all. And, uh, my clients, uh, in order to make the building, uh, barrier-free accessible, would like to install an elevator system, uh, in the building, and I've determined that the best location for that is the, the rear, um, northeast corner of the, uh, of the building. It would work fine for all three floors, except we run out of room on the last floor, on the uppermost floor, the third floor. And that's, that's, uh, warranted a, uh, a dormer, a little dormer roof, um, at the rear of the building, uh, about eight feet long and about twenty-eight inches high. Uh, and because it's designated historic, um, any changes to the exterior have to be approved by you. Um, Heritage has already s- signaled that they have no concerns with the application. So, um, I'm asking for your approval for what I consider to be a, a minor variance to this, uh, to the exterior of this, uh, very beautiful historic building.
So the dormer would, would that contain mechanical things?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, uh, Mr. Lay, you're almost as bad as I am. It's Isabella Street, not Augusta.
I beg your pardon, um.
I got all the, I got everything wrong.
I beg your pardon. Freudian, my parents, my parents lived for four years at ninety-two Augusta in, in Porto.
I, I thought I heard you wrongly too.
I'm so sorry.
Yeah, no, it's fine. It's the same building.
Yeah. Okay. Let us, uh, anybody have any questions, or can we go into committee?
No.
Yeah, I, I just had a quick question. The variance is to extend the non-conforming office building, and it just says to be extended. What, what exactly does that mean? Is that forever, or is there a time period?
No, the, 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 uh, building deems, um, any, any additional area outside the original building envelope to be an extension. And in this case, it's a little dormer roof up on the roof line.
All right, thank you.
Welcome.
Yeah, okay. Uh, Carl?
Mr. Chairman, I, I think this is a very, very minor variance. Um, the, um, the impact on the exterior of the building is almost imperceptible. Uh, you really have to look to see it. I don't think there could be a negative impact for anyone, and the inclusion of an elevator just makes the building that much more usable to a larger group of the population. Um, unless my colleagues have, uh, have any concerns, I'd like to move an approval without any conditions for this application.
Yes. Yeah, this, Peter, you seconded? Okay. Uh, I have a note here about a curb cut, trans- curb cut. That Transportation was looking for a curb cut or something, or I have the wrong-
No, there's just an email-
Objection.
Pardon?
Right.
Do I have the wrong building, or what?
No, Transportation said they had no objections to this. That's right.
Okay. All right. All in favor? Have your approval, sir. Thank you. Number seventy, Gormley Avenue. Purpose of this application is to construct a three-story detached dwelling with a front yard parking space, a front porch, a rear ground floor deck, and a rear second-story terrace. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant, email correspondence from Transportation, and correspondence and support from thirty-five Gormley Avenue. Ms. Barkley?
Yes, hello. My name is Sarah Barkley from Ruben Offside Group, eighteen Gloucester Lane, Unit Four, F four Y, one L five.
So could you speak up a little? I, I can't hear you.
Yes, can you hear me okay now?
Yes, we can. Uh, so could we have, uh, your brief presentation?
Sure. Um, so we're proposing here a new detached three-story home on this lot. Uh, the size and massing are in keeping with other development that has already occurred on the street. We did communicate a fair bit with planning prior to scheduling a hearing date and have already made some changes, uh, to the drawings as per their request. The notice and drawings you have in front of you are up to date and do reflect, uh, the changes that they have requested. Um, we've also spoken with a few neighbors, um, and while the neighbor to the east did have some questions related to construction, we have not received any concerns regarding the variances requested. Do you have two support letters from thirty-five and sixty-two when it was submitted a little bit late? Um, I will note that the existing house on the lot is closer to the street, closer to the sidewalk line, and has a, a very large front porch. So the placement of the new home is improving, um, the conditions such as setbacks, eve encroachment, and front yard landscaping. Um, we've submitted to you some photos on the street which show the mixture of homes, uh, the different setback patterns, as well as the existing parking and curb cuts that exist. Uh, there is also an area map which shows you, um, some similar approvals in the area, um, in regards to the density, as well as, um, the existing parking conditions on the street. So you will see that almost every house, um, along Gormley, if you, if the technician could kindly open up the, the area map, um, that would, would give you a good idea. Um, so you'll see that almost every house on the street, uh, does have either a front yard parking pad or a direct driveway to access an internal garage. We are aware that, uh, Transportation did, uh, write in that they are in support of the, uh, front yard parking, but do you have some concerns related to the curb cut? We did speak further with them regarding this matter and understand that the concern is related to, uh, the curb cut removing, um, parking space on the street. Um, but I do want to point out that the current distance between the curb cut at seventy and sixty-eight Gormley, uh, cannot fit two cars as it is. It's about a one and a half car length. So by increasing the curb cut, uh, to allow for safer parking, um, doesn't really take away parking space on the street. Um, so we do feel that the proposed parking pad and the curb cut, uh, don't impact the available parking and also mirrors conditions that already exist along Gormley Avenue. Um, so in summary, we feel that the proposed home is in keeping with the neighborhood, and the variances requested are relatively minor in nature.
Thank you. Panel, do you have any questions? Okay. Su Shuen Chang, pardon?
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question first?
Yes, Carl, sorry.
The, the applicant indicated you're, you're aware of Transportation Services' objection to two point one meters, uh, for the curb cut. Did they give you a curb cut dimension that they were prepared to support, or they just indicated that they didn't agree with two point one?
Uh, they did not give the number. They did sort of indicate that they were flexible on a increase. Um, and that's when they explained that the, the reason was the concern over removing that street parking. So we did investigate that further and found that by increasing the curb cut, it really doesn't take away any parking space. So, um, we would like to, uh, proceed with the site plan as is, um, as we feel that it doesn't, uh, impact the availability of parking.
However, if we wanted to, um, to reflect, um, Transportation's concern, would you have difficulty with a, with a condition that said the curb cut is to be of a dimension approved by Transportation Services?
I don't-
You're not, you're not going to get approval for this as it is?
Yes, we would be fine with a condition to work with Transportation.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Uh, Su Shuen Chang, please?
Uh, yes, um, I, I just heard the applicant saying that, uh, it's one point five parking space in between sixty-eight Gormley and seventy.
Uh, just a minute.
But, uh, from my observation, there always be, um, being like two cars parking there, so, um-
Could you, could you just-
I, I do think, uh-
Uh, Ms. Chang?
Yeah?
Yeah, before you jump in, uh, could you just give your, give us your name and your address for the record?
Oh, sorry. Uh, my name is Duwen Chan, and, uh, I'm at sixty-eight Gormley Avenue.
Yeah. Okay. So is it your driveway that's adjacent to seventy?
Um, no, I'm the, um, right-hand side, uh, on, on the, um, the plan she is showing.
Okay.
I just want to comment, uh, um, the, the, um, curb cut that, um, um, you guys were, uh, discussing about. Uh, I'm not against this, uh, um, new house. It's just that, uh, I'm hoping that everything can, um, can follow the instruction from the, um, the, uh, Transportation Department, because currently they are able to fit in two cars parking there. Uh, while, uh, the applicant said only one point five car and, uh, and she didn't, she doesn't believe that, um, the new proposal will reduce the parking numbers, which I don't believe is true. But, uh, if the Transportation Department can make sure that the parkings on the street remain the same numbers, then I'm okay. So I, I guess this is a condition.
Yeah, that's a condition Mr. Nepfeld suggested. Okay. All right. So, uh, Ms. Barkley?
Yes, hi. Um, so I, I can appreciate, um, what the neighbor is saying.
So I can appreciate what the neighbor is saying. I can tell you, I do have the measurement of the curb between, or sorry, the parking space between the two curb cuts, which is not really adequate to fit two cars. From what our client has expressed to us, that if two cars park there, they actually block the current opening. So it is a bit problematic as is. But that being said, you know, we're still happy to work with the transportation condition and speak with them further on what would be appropriate for the site.
Okay, thank you. We're now in committee. Does anyone have any comments, or do we have a motion?
I can, I can tell me my comment. With the condition that Carl suggested about limiting the width of the curb cut or to do the satisfaction to the Transportation, I'm okay, I'm ready to support the application.
All right, so bring a motion. Jim?
I will bring a motion for approval subject to the curb cut bill such that it's to the satisfaction of Transportation Engineer.
Okay, do we have a second, there? Peter, all in favor? Have your approval, thank you. Fourteen, Ross Trevor Road. Purpose of this application is to construct a new two-story detached dwelling with a partially covered rear ground floor deck. Mr. Laslow?
Good afternoon, I'm Drew Laslow, agent for the owner. Address thirty-three seventeen Young Street.
Okay.
Supposed to you if you'd like me to put on a brief presentation, or if you'd just like to ask me some questions.
Yeah, we don't need any dogs or ponies. Yeah, okay, panel, do we need a presentation? I lost my pen.
No.
Okay. Okay, so we'll take it into committee. And any comments, or do we have a motion? Yes, Carl?
Mr. Chairman, it's refreshing to see that the applicant, in this case, did his homework in collaborating with the neighborhood. The letters of support are overwhelming, and it's a tribute to the applicant for approaching the variance in the right way. So I have no difficulty with this application. I would like to bring forward a motion of approval without condition.
Okay, we have a second, there? Peter? All right, all in favor? Have your approval, sir, thank you. That completes finally the morning list. It's now three-thirty-two. So we come back at four-thirty? Barbara?
Yes, that sounds good. So for anyone listening on YouTube or still on WebEx, we are behind. But the members and staff definitely need a break just to walk around, eat something. So we will resume at four-thirty. The current YouTube will end now, and we'll start another session at four-thirty, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.